Good afternoon, really, it's 5:31 and as we're calling the select board meeting for January 20th, 2021 to order. And this is a virtual meeting because of Governor Baker's executive order from March 12th, 2020, giving us the ability to hold remote meetings because of the pandemic. So this is an off week meeting, it's not a regular meeting for us. And we will get right to with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This seems like an extra special pledge of allegiance, given that it's inauguration day and it's a historic inauguration. You know, Kamala Harris is a first on a couple of different fronts and also Joe Biden, our former Vice President, now President. So I'm glad that we had that. I would have added it to the agenda anyway, had we not had it. So COVID-19 update. And Mr. Dennehy, we have the Third Amendment to our agreement with transformative healthcare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a quick update. So this past Sunday, the town hosted its eighth pre-COVID testing day. In all, 929 tests were administered. Thirty-nine of those tests came back positive, which is approximately 4.2%. So we are seeing a positivity rate decline at our testing facility. That doesn't mean that's what we're seeing throughout the state. In all, in all of the eight sites, over 4,800 tests have been administered. And the second piece of this is to approve the amendment to the transformative care Fallon Ambulance Contract to enable to increase the funding, which currently sits at $400,000 to $200,000 additional to cap it at $600,000. And announce that this board, thanks to that approval and passage of this amendment, will enable the town to host two additional free COVID testing days, Sunday, January 7th and Sunday, sorry, Sunday, February 7th and Sunday, February 21st, both from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the DPW Yard at 629 Randolph Ave.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Doyle?
I'll be first, Madam Chair, the order. My first comment will be Bravo. And I'll follow that with a question, Mike. This was one of the administrations that was open. So that, do we have any idea of the 39 who tested positive? How many were Milton residents versus non-Milton?
We do not, or I do not at this time, but the information that Fallon Ambulance Transformative Healthcare collects, I could certainly find out that. And of the 4,823 tests that have been administered, we have an aggregate, we've been collecting all that information on the positives, but certainly something I could collect from the folks at Transformative.
No rush in the presence of so many other imperatives, but that might be a good piece of information to have ultimately when everything is wrapped up.
Excellent, yeah. And if you recall, the test after Christmas, I believe it was December 27th, we had nearly 7.7 positivity rate come out of the number of tests that were administered that day. So if this site is micro of what's going on on a macro level, it's a good story, but you know, we'll see when the numbers come out on Thursday. We did end up last Thursday in our fourth consecutive week as a high-risk community because we were greater than 5% positivity at 5.69. So the numbers are trending down a little bit, but until we get that positivity number below 5%, we will continue to stay in a high-risk community, which then has its disadvantages. Obviously, the library is continuing its very successful curbside services until we get consecutive weeks not as a high-risk community, so.
Thank you on that note, Madam Chair. If you would like, I will move the Third Amendment to agreement between the Town of Milton and Fallon Transformative Healthcare related to COVID-19 testing.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And welcome, Richard. Yes, Mike?
Mike, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, how much of the CARES Act funding will remain after we approve this additional $200,000 for the testing?
Great question. So I saw an email from schools today that the bus initiative seems to be going forward. Back of the envelope stuff, previously, we had about $512,000. If you take this 200 and the 225 that MPS had asked for, should be somewhere in the vicinity of $100,000.
All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. Excellent, thank you. And Item 3B, discussion approval CARES Act funds, request from Health Department for vaccine program. And we're welcoming with us our Health Director, Caroline Cincella. Hello, Caroline. You're muted.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
How are you doing tonight? Good?
Yes. How are you doing and how's your staff doing?
Yeah, we're tired, yeah. It's just the beginning, yeah. So today, we ran another clinic, I'll back it up to last week. We ran our first COVID-19 clinics here at the Health Department downstairs in the basement. And we had 50 doses that we gave of the Moderna vaccine. And this week, we just finished up with 60 doses, 30 for each day, four hours for each time slot. And we're planning to do that in the future, continue Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And when we get more vaccine, we're going to keep on increasing the doses that we're getting. Unfortunately, I found out this afternoon that we're not getting any doses next week, which is disappointing. I was hoping to, you know, increase it every week, but you know, it got delegated someplace else. Norwood, we were supposed to pick it up at Norwood, so it was a regional vaccine dispersment, and that got canceled. And I don't know if it went to CVS or Gillette Stadium, but we're not getting anything next week, but that's how it goes. You know, it's kind of like stop and start. And it's going to be a process. So you know, I'm just going to have to wait and see. We had police fire EMS and the nurses that I vaccinated, they helped me out the clinics. I also heard today that they're going to start with the healthcare workers, starting tomorrow. They may have, some people may have started with that, but that's what the state told me today. And you know, we'll just have to see as the vaccine increases, the distribution. I'm hoping to move it from the Town Hall basement to Council on Aging, where we can have a larger setup there. And you know, hopefully, maybe do 100 doses a day on Tuesday and Wednesday, further maybe into Phase 2. We can open it up on Saturday or Sunday to have more residents come when we get to Phase 2. So right now, we're in Phase 1. And you know, as we see other places, it will be offering the vaccines, CVS, Walgreens. Walgreens went to Brussels Care Center and they vaccinated the residents there with the staff. So it's going to be, you know, slow going and a little bumpy in the beginning. We're also learning a new system, PrepMod. And they rolled that out at the same time that the vaccines came out. So we're getting some staff up and running. I also asked Michael Dennehy if we could, you know, use some more staff in the building that can help me out, which is fantastic. A couple of people have stepped up and they're learning the PrepMod system. So I think that's a challenge to get the PrepMod system going and then have a nurse also working in conjunction with someone on PrepMod to enter all the vaccine information that needs to be collected real time. And then that's all reported to the state. So, and we also thank you to Chief Madden. He has sent us an EMT to be on site also because we're watching for any kind of reaction. Fifteen minutes, people have to wait after they get a vaccine or if they've ever had any kind of reactions in the past where they've needed epinephrine, you know, we have to watch them for 30 minutes. So thankful that we are getting help, where help is needed to really ramp up more vaccines to be distributed. And we had a meeting today about, you know, emergency dispensing plans and going forward into the Council on Aging. So you know, as soon as we get the vaccine, we're going to be ramping it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Do members have any questions or comments? I think we're not necessarily familiar with the request for funds, so if you might tell us a little bit about that.
So Tuesdays and Wednesdays, I'll have staff that will be here in the building, working with me when we are moving over to the Council on Aging. We'll need the EMT to come with us. So we'll be staffing for that on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. We have some nurses that will need some staff for that. I think the biggest, you know, looking further out, is planning the clinics on the Saturday. And you know, what will it take to run a clinic on Saturday? You know, rough numbers with Michael Dennehy, maybe about close to $10,000. And that's rough because I don't know, you know, exactly. You know, as I say, we're ramping it up, how many nurses, how many stations? But I think all in all, I'd say close to $10,000 if we're going to be running a clinic on the weekend and then asking people to come in. And we'll have, in addition to staffing, we'll have some Medical Reserve Corps volunteers also helping us. So it's going to take an army to put these on on the weekends, but during the week, I think it'll be more manageable and not as expensive.
Okay, oh, thank you. Yeah, I was curious about a number, just, you know, as Mike had just asked, you know, how much do we have left? So after some of the other things that we've been reserving, trying to reserve that money for, it's about 100K and I didn't know what we might need. So that's helpful just as we go along, so we make sure that we have what you need. And also, as you go along, you might be able to identify other things that you might need as well. So, thank you.
I know the COVID CARES Act money is also paying for some nurses. And my nurse, Sue Poirier, went from 16 hours to full-time. And we have three other nurses that are in the queue helping us with surveillance. So we're probably spending another $2,000 to $3,000 for nursing, contact tracing and surveillance. And that's a week.
A week.
Yeah. I'd say probably around two. I have to go back and look, but yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Yes.
Yeah, so in the calculations that got us to the numbers, previously the balance, that was included to continue with her service level for the COVID testing and contact tracing and all the good work that they had been done. Very productive meeting that Caroline hosted this morning with LEPC Chair Chuck Caputo, Chief King, myself and Chief Madden, where we went through the process of where might be the best place to host this, understanding that the Blue Room has its limitations. Very productive down there, the last two Tuesdays and Wednesdays, but it wouldn't be able to handle that 100 per day capacity. So very strong recommendation from LEPC Chair Caputo and corroborated by Chief King and Chief Madden that the Council on Aging would be a good place to host it. I did reach out to Director Stanton, she would certainly welcome that. She's receiving multiple phone calls from residents wondering when that Phase 2 will roll out. I would suggest, and it was suggested, that just in order to manage this rollout, and we are very preliminary with this, with that, we probably would be better off limiting it to Milton residents with photo ID and stuff like that. It's just something that would be more manageable at that site because there are limitations and there's some reservations that's required. And as Caroline continues to put this process together and with all the administrative steps and training that has to take place and over the course of the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, that schedule, Caroline coordinates with vaccination distribution on a higher level for the town. But good first meeting this morning about where and hopefully when is the next step, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Doyle?
Summarize it, Caroline?
Yes, thank you, Michael.
Great, thanks. Mr. Doyle, you're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm in total agreement with what is on the table. I just have one question. If supply, it's a contingency question. If supply were to free up and additional support was needed, considering that there is a lifespan associated with the vaccine after it's delivered, do we want to build in some additional monies for contingency purposes beyond the $10,000 just to have that cushion? It doesn't mean it would be spent if it's not needed. It's just that if something were to break through for the community, it would be there.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, Arthur, that we would make sure that there's enough CARES money that just in case something like that happened, that, you know, we wouldn't just leave it to 10,000. That was my feeling, but I don't know, Caroline and Mike, what you think of that? And if we need to entertain that right now? And you know, do we need to vote to approve use for the vaccine program? And do you want a dollar amount or do we leave it open? I don't know what members think or what Caroline and Mike Dennehy would suggest. Yes, Mr. Dennehy?
Yeah, to Caroline's point, to Director Cincella's point earlier, this was back of the envelope stuff, Tuesday, Wednesday, throw in some Saturdays and Sundays if possible. So I think in fairness to this board, if we could put together a spreadsheet that does work through the contingencies, as Member Doyle mentioned, that we could run some what-if scenarios and this is what it would look like for 10 or 20, understanding that we have two dates for the COVID testing identified. If we get to February 21st and we feel that the vaccination may trump any testing that may need to take place, maybe that supersedes that funding. The amendment just gives the town the ability to go to 600,000 on the testing piece. By no means am I trying to diminish that, but you know, in a month's time, we may be in a different direction and some of that money may be needed to be reallocated if the vaccination distribution is on an uptake.
Okay.
But I think for the sake of this discussion, if we could bring this back next Wednesday with a more solid number, if you will. Obviously, it's probably going to be a fixed cost. It's just the Member Doyle's point again, it's just the number of occasions where it would be, you know, where we could figure out the map.
Okay, great.
If that makes sense.
Yes, absolutely. Does anyone else have something they'd like to say? No?
I think Richard has his hands up.
Oh, there he is. I was just going to say, where did Richard go? Hillary, could you?
I have to run, Madam Chair. I vote yes, whatever you vote, so.
Okay.
Thank you, all right.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. There he is, okay. Hopefully, there's not an emergency. Okay, so we'll wait to hear from you next week. And Director Cincella, thank you and thank you to your staff. And you know, please, I'm glad that you're continuing to talk to Mr. Dennehy about how we can best help. Something, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Caroline.
Appreciate it. Take care.
You too. Okay, so we, next we have a discussion about consulting or support for the town relative to 42B hearing process. We hadn't really had a hearing up until last night. And Ms. Conlon was able to be there, I was at the Warrant Committee, but Mr. Dennehy also was able to watch the tape. And I did have a discussion with Tim Zerwinski and he was very pleased with how last evening went. And his memo to Mr. Mullen, the Chair of that hearing, laid out how the plan, how the town plans to engage during the hearing. And I think everybody got a copy of that. So at this moment, I don't know what the Board might feel is necessary. He, Tim said that he would let us know as things develop, if something else is needed. I know also Kathleen O'Donnell is going to these hearings for the Planning Board, so there's, you know, that second set of eyes and ears. And Judy, I had a discussion with Judy Barrett about making sure, she's aware of any time that the town would need to weigh in, but Tim will be there and taking notes, making sure that any, anything that needs to be followed up on is followed up on. And also, he will be working with the peer reviewers. And then after the applicants present and the peer reviews come in and they're all reviewed, town staff will be going in to give additional testimony. So just to give everybody a little background before we talk about whether and if we want to have something additional, you know, an additional presence or some other kind of support in addition to Judy and Johanna Schneider and Tim or Allison. Allison will probably go to some of the hearings as well. So I don't know, Katie, since you were there, what was your sense of how it went?
For 582, it was just a preliminary, well, more than preliminary. It was the applicant's initial presentation, but it was a 30,000-foot overview. And there were a lot of questions that the board members said they would have, but they're starting the more detailed presentations tonight. So not a lot of the questions were asked last night. It was really a matter of the applicant presenting their case. Tim was there, I was an attendee, so I don't know who else may have been there from the town if anyone else was. But it was, the process has started, but it was only about an hour's meeting.
Yes, by the time I got a warrant committee, it was over, so. I didn't get there. Does anyone else have something that they, a question that, or, yes, Mr. Zulus?
So I think my sense is that the interest of the residents is to make sure that they are represented and that they have an advocate at those hearings. And so if the plan is to have a member of the Planning Department at every hearing, either the Planning Director or the Assistant Planning Director. Seems to me that's good. Is that, and that's the, Mike Dennehy, is that the plan at this point, to have that resource at each hearing, either the Planning Director or the Assistant Planning Director?
Not formally, no. Tim is following each of them live. He has spoken to the panel chairs and asked preliminarily what they're looking for. Obviously, there's three different panel chairs, both Chair Leonard and then Members Hurley and Member Mullen, who took over last night. And they may do things differently. He has had conversations with each of them, as has Judy Barrett. So yeah, it's, again, it's, as Vice Chair Conlon said, last night was the first rollout, really, of the public hearing process. But Tim has reached out to each of those three chairs for support.
Right.
And so, I was just going to say, it sounds like we'll have the support of the Planning Department there. And then we'll have the support as needed from a consultant and a lawyer. And then I guess the question is, do we want to make sure or is it important for a member of our Board, and I've seen this suggested by residents, a member of our Board to be available at each of the hearings? That would be a challenge, given everything else, but I guess that's something we should consider, whether we want to do some kind of assignment process for each of us to be available for these hearings to make sure that we are monitoring them and that the residents are.
So I plan to go to every single one that I can make it to. And I think, I don't know about other people, and I mean, to your question, I don't know if we want that. I do want to say that Tim Zerwinski's, his approach to this is to create as orderly and sensible an approach as possible. So if people are expecting him to jump in during a proceeding, that's, his plan is to go to observe, to collect, to go back to staff and follow up on anything that needs, you know, that is a question, has to, you know, have something tied up, those things, and come back to the next hearing prepared with all of that, just so. Because it's difficult to know what people are expecting procedure-wise, but that seems to be what the Chair, at least of this hearing, is also looking for.
So every single one that you can go to is, that's great. I guess the question, it begs the question, whether we want to have some kind of schedule so that we have coverage at all the meetings? And whether that's something that we want as a Board, you know, see if we can cover everything that may, you know? And so that's the question.
So what do, what would people, what would people like to do?
Madam Chair, I mean, I'm planning on going to as many of them as I can. Five years ago, I did go to all of them, or 99% of them, but it's with four of them, it's harder than it is with two. And they're staggered. So for instance, this week, there's three or four nights of 582 and some of the others are not starting for a while. So Tim, but I think with Tim representing the town. So Tim, but I, but I think with Tim representing the town's interests, at some point, the Board will want to offer comments that, that might be jumping ahead to number six because we have some comments for the Ice House on the agenda. But at some point, the, the Board will have an opportunity to make official comments, either through the Chair or through a designee of the Board, or maybe through multiple members of the Board. But at least the official presence of the town is, is through the Planning Director.
So I, I don't think it should be on Melinda to, to go to every single one, or that she can, or you, Katie, to go. But if we can, if we can have kind of a schedule and see if we can fill in the schedule. And, you know, I can go then, certain, you know, so we can, you know, people can go whenever they want. But at least we'll have a schedule where we expect someone to be able to provide, perhaps some night when, when you can. So it seems to me that would be a good idea if we had a master schedule. Here are all the meetings, here, here are the meetings that, that we think, that I think that I can go to and you think you can go to. And then it seems to me, well, we may have some good coverage.
Maybe we could put a Google schedule together and people could just check boxes if they can go, if people are happy to do that, or if that's something that, that you think is useful.
May I ask a question? Mike, did you have in mind, like, you know, one person cover, like, a particular project? Because, you know, I think if somebody's at a hearing Tuesday night and then someone else is there Wednesday, there's no continuity then. So that might make it challenging to really address anything, although we're going to have Tim there to address the questions or points that come up. If it's just there to be informed, then I, I guess that's, that makes sense, you know, that would work.
Yeah, it, it, it's a good point, Katie, whether we should try to have one of us follow each one. My sense is that that might create scheduling issues. And that, you know, that, I think that would be the ideal, if we could do that. But I, my, my sense is that that might be, it, it might be easier for us just to, to, to be able to sign up, for example, on a Google schedule, these are the hearings that I can go to. And then if there's one open, you know, we can, we can, we can reschedule, we can, you know, find out who can, who can cover it. I was thinking more for coverage, Katie, more than, than that substantively following each one. I was thinking for coverage so that, so that, so that we have an idea about what's going on at each of these hearings.
So, and, and it's important to remember that they're all recorded, so. But I, I mean, I'm.
So I think, I think the idea of a, of a schedule like you suggested, Melinda, is a good idea.
Okay.
I mean, I suppose we could also ask, we could probably also ask the planning staff for periodic update. But that might be putting more work on them than what they can handle at this point. I think their plates are pretty full.
Right. Well, let, let's, let's try this schedule idea and see how it goes. And just because someone signed up, the rest of us can also, because we're just observing, so.
That's the thing, they keep us in the attendee list, so it's not, so we, when you're in, you don't even know who else is there when you're an attendee, but.
Right, right. But we know one of us will be there. So that, that can give us some, some peace of mind. So I think I see what you're saying, Katie, nobody knows whether we're there or not.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, right, so. But.
So if it's generated by the neighborhoods, the neighbors, there was, I saw an email from neighbors asking, you know, we're going to have a member of the Board, they had strongly advocated all of these. I think Tim's going to be there to advocate, but the neighbors won't even know we're there because they're, we'd all be in the attendee grouping.
Right, and that's, again, not, I, I mean, until, until it's time for us to make statements. And it, that, that's just not, unfortunately, for, for people who are looking for that, that's not how the process works. And I, I understand that people would like it to be a, a, a different, I do. But we have to work with what we have.
But we'll, but we'll know.
But we'll know, that's what I was going to say, which I think is what you were going for, Mike.
We'll know that we're there and we can actually, we can let the residents know that, that we have these meetings covered.
Okay, thank you. So next we have an engagement letter with Johanna Schneider from Hemingway &amp; Barnes on general advice regarding 40B on an as-needed basis. So this is just general 40B legal advice for the town. So if a town staff member or someone from a, a, a board needs that advice, it would be best for them to touch base with Mr. Dennehy maybe first, if it's a staff member. But, but are there any questions? There is a thirty thousand dollar retainer. And it's, I think it's in general a very, you know, kind of boilerplate. Does anyone have any questions or comments, Mr. Zulis?
Just the, the retainer for this project, for an as-needed basis, that's, you know, far be, for me to question a lawyer's retainer. But that struck me as a little bit rich.
Okay.
For this, because I don't, you know, if it's as needed, we now, we may not hit thirty thousand for months.
Right.
Whereas, you know, when we, when we hired them before, it was for that project, which was the, the work on Randolph Avenue. And so that was predictable, that they were going to be doing a large chunk of work. This, it seems to me, it's a little less predictable that, you know, we're going to need them for thirty thousand dollars of work in the next few months. And, and maybe, you know, maybe a third of that might be, might be sufficient. And then you can always replenish, replenish it, but it just struck me as a little, for, for an as-needed basis, struck me as a little bit rich, retaining.
Okay.
I didn't see that in the letter, maybe I've got it earlier drafted, but what, what page is that on?
It's at the end.
That's paragraph, Katie.
Yeah.
I, I wonder if that's a carryover from a, you know, that doesn't belong there. Maybe we could just check that out before we sign it.
Okay.
Because I think this was just to, to really just to update the, the pre-existing letter for, so maybe that's a carryover.
Okay, well, I, I will check that out, I'll suggest a third. And so do we want to, do we want to just defer this to the next meeting?
No, I think we should just go ahead and approve it. Is that right?
Approve it, approve it.
Would that change? We.
Subject to a reduction to, to ten thousand dollars? Okay.
So I'll move that we.
Or as low, or as low as you can get, Melinda.
As low as, well, I need a number, you know?
Yeah, I mean.
If she says eighteen, still, that's a lot more than a third.
To me, it feels like ten is, to me, it feels like ten, but that's, that's just me.
Okay.
So I'll move that we approve the engagement letter with Hemingway &amp; Barnes as presented with that amendment and authorize the Town Administrator to sign the agreement.
I'll second. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes, and Richard's here.
Richard's back. I, I, that's right. Mr. Wells? You're muted. I'll say yes, Melinda Conlon.
I am, yes, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. I will do that tomorrow. So. If we actually, could we just take? Do we, do we have the letter for Emmett Logue? Actually, I think we do, right? Right, okay. How about we just get all these approvals out of the way and then we look at our, our, we'll get the engagement letters out of the way first. So if we could go to eight, which is engagement letter with Hemingway &amp; Barnes for consultation of drafting a lease for land at four thirty-two Adams Street.
There's no retainer listed in this one.
No, there's no, there's no, there's no retainer. And they did get a waiver from the Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Boston, so they're all set with that. And, and the, I, I think that, basically, what they would be helping us do too is drive process on this to, to make sure that, that the process of getting the negotiation going and moving it along and, and all that, along with Mr. Logue, just, just to help us with those steps that are needed. And one of the first things I think we would, they were looking for, kind of a, just a download about the property from Dan Clark and Brian Walsh. So just to, to understand that.
Although, Madam Chair, I, I, again, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have them bill too much until we at least have some terms that are agreed to. I wouldn't, I wouldn't really set the lawyers to start billing until we, 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 we're pretty close to having terms agreed to.
Okay, well, that, that, that brings me to the, the next thing that I wanted to talk about with that. But I, I'm, I'm not sure we can talk about it here. But we, we should talk about who's going to really be working on that. But we, I guess we really need our appraisal first anyway. So is there any discussion, questions about the engagement letter? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approving an engagement letter of Hemingway &amp; Barnes for consultation and drafting of a lease for land at four thirty-two Adams Street.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle? You're muted, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes, great. And now we have an engagement letter with Emmett Logue, M A I C R E, Member Appraisal Institute and Council of Real Estate of Landvest for appraisal of four thirty-two Adams Street. I don't believe we have one for five twenty-five Adams Street, or do, does it?
We don't.
We don't, yeah.
We don't as of yet.
Okay, right, thank you. Does, does anyone have any questions or comments on this engagement letter? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we sign an engagement letter with Landvest for the appraisal of four thirty-two Adams Street. And I guess we're going to leave off five twenty-five Adams Street for, from this motion, okay? And do you want to authorize the Town Administrator to sign it, or would somebody else be signing it?
Yes, the Town Administrator.
Town Administrator.
Thank you, all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zulis?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes. And we did authorize Mike Dennehy to sign the, the, the lease engagement letter for Hemingway &amp; Barnes, right? Okay, just making sure. Excellent, so the last thing that we have is Select Board comments regarding five eighty-five to five eighty-seven Blue Hill Parkway, the Ice House 40B application before the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I, I think that brings up also the, the question of how we want to handle other, other comments. This is the first one and it, that, that, that was opened. And it's, it seems a little bit different than some of the other ones. And we don't have comments ready for the other ones, which is okay. But I think at our next meeting, we might want to talk about, I, I'm not sure we can talk about it here. If we can, that's great. But how we want to handle those, if we wanted to, to hand something in upfront. And then also after the application, our applicant has presented to, to make a further statement, or if we just want to save it for after the applicant presents. And we could do that here as well. I, I can't find my, my copy. But, but would people like to hand in something? It doesn't necessarily have to be what I wrote. This was just a draft. My feeling was that they had worked with, not only with residents, but, but with, with the town on addressing resident comments and, and, and getting a little closer to the zoning. And they worked really well, listened very, very well to Cheryl Taggias's thoughts on how to honor that, the original zoning more. So I'll just be quiet now, and who would like to say something?
Madam Chair, I know that they opened the applicant's case and I was not able to attend that hearing, so I am going to watch the tape. So I don't, and they're going through the peer reviews now. I don't know whether it's premature or not for us to submit our comments until the town has an opportunity through Mr. Zerwinski to make some comments. I, I think we should be preparing it and I think we're off to a good start with your draft. I'm just wondering whether we should withhold submitting comments until, we can be working on it, but should we, should we withhold that until we have some additional evidence presented? We hear the, the rest of the information that's going to be presented? From what I gathered from, from the chairs, they are going to give an opportunity later on in the process for the Boards to make comments.
Right, right. And I, I also, I, I wasn't able to get into that meeting, so I didn't, I, I, I wasn't able to, to watch it. And I haven't yet. So that's, would, would other people like to wait and see how it develops? Yes, Mr. Zulis?
So Madam Chair, I, I mean, I, I guess what I was thinking is that, you know, based on our experience with the applicant and our work with the applicant or applicants, I thought we could, we could, we could tell the Board of Appeals, based on that, whether we supported a project at the beginning, based on, based on our work with them. And I, you know, for example, for this, the Ice House, based on our work with the developer and their responsiveness to the neighborhood, we might want to come out at the beginning and say, look, based on what we know of the project and based on our work with the developer, we support the direction the developers are going in because they responded to the neighborhood's, neighborhood's concerns. Seems to me we could, we could make, we could tell the Board of Appeals that at the beginning and then we can reserve our rights to comment at the end, based on, based on what, what is presented to the Board of Appeals. And we could do that with each project and say, look, based on our experience with the process so far, we can either support or not support, or, or, or we could also defer, I suppose. But I thought we, we might, and Katie, you, you might tell me that, you've been through this obviously before, so you may tell me that's not a good idea. But I, I, I thought it might be a good idea to at least let the Board of Appeals know that based on our experience with an applicant, whether we support the direction they're going. I think we do for the Ice House, I thought we did, given, given, given their responsiveness and what they did to respond to the neighborhood's concern.
I, I actually, I, I didn't send it out, but I, I did start changing the, the letter a little bit. The first thing I put in there was about reserving our right to make further comments because I realized after reading some other letters, Katie was kind enough to send me some, some, some great models, that that's very important to do, even for a project that is really going in, in, in the right direction or, or we might feel is going in the right direction. So, but I, Katie, I don't know your thoughts on that.
Well, I mean, I, I guess to some extent I agree with Mike because I, I think there was support for the concept once some changes were made to the proposal and some commercial space was added and the building was reconfigured. So, so I agree with that, although the Chair and I, I thought we're on a call where we, we thought that maybe support is probably, it may not be the right terminology to use, but to indicate that there are things about the, the positive aspects of the project that we like might be the way to go. We, we could submit something early on in that, since this one is a little bit different, where the applicant did respond to the town's initial comments, and then submit our follow-up comments later, because it may be that there's still technical issues that come out of the peer reviews that we, that we'd want to be sure get addressed in the town's interest.
Yeah, we, we were, I, I, I remember that call, Katie, and, and, but in subsequent conversations, that it's a little less clear, so I, maybe that's not the right language exactly. But I, I, that, that was one reason I thought it would be good to put something in, as Mike said, a little earlier on, really documenting how the process went. And, and that. um, how the process went, and, um, and that, uh, well, you know, I, I mean, I don't know any other way to say it, I think that, I think that our, our, um, our, our, um, our appreciation that is clear, and that, that should speak, I think, pretty highly of the support for it, but, um, but, I, I, I don't know, so, I don't know, um, Richard? Yeah, oh, good.
I agree, I agree with both of you, I do, I think that, um, going, beginning when I was chair, carrying over to Mr. Zulus, and now to you, that, um, and, and I, I'm, even to Katie's point, you know, do we wait and do it to the end? But I don't know if it would be as effective as if we didn't kind of wave that positive flag right now. We, we do have to say that this developer has been, um, has done this, so.
Mm-hmm.
I think that it might be prudent to do it now. I guess just by two cents, huh?
Yeah, thank you. Um. Okay, so, um. I don't know if people had a chance to really look at it and see what kind of changes they might like to make, um. I, I don't know.
One more, one more thing, Madam Chair, just one more thing? I, I do think of everything that's before us, this is gonna be the fastest.
Yes.
I, I think, given everyone's comments, and what, what we know of what this project has been, and all the work that's gone on, both from the prior owner to this owner and this developer, um, and the anticipation that is, that is yearned for by residents of that neighborhood, I think that this will be a pretty quick project, that's my gut feeling on this.
Right, I think the thing that's slowing it down at this point is the scheduling, so it's been, what, February 23rd? And, and there, the peer reviews are, are going to be the things that, that I think will, um, will, will drive it. And, um, and I think, you know, there, there's some pieces missing in the application, so if they can get those tied up quickly, that will also really help move it along, um, so the, the planning board's letter, I, I got to, to look at that, and, um, and there are, there are a few things missing, I, I don't think anything that, that they can't handle, um, putting together, but, um.
So I, oh, so I was just gonna say, Madam Chair, I have two, I have two comments on, uh, two specifically, kind of overview comments on the, on the draft. One is, um, I thought that the developer was going to do something with the path.
Yes.
Pope's Pond, and so I think we, we can refer to that.
Handicapped access to and around Pope's Pond, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, they were gonna, they were, and, 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 um, as another positive aspect to this. And then the second thing is, I, I, I think we could be a little stronger at the end, saying that we support their efforts, and we support, uh, or support the project. I, you know, we can, you know, a, again, reserving our rights to see what happens, but based on what we know thus far, and based on the process though, thus far, uh, you know, we support their efforts, and we support this, because they've responded to the neighborhood.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I, I do think one little kink that has arisen, I don't know if all the members are aware of it, but one little, Mr. Dennehy is, one kink that has arisen recently is a purchase of an abutte who has access to ownership directly to the water line, and I don't know if you're all aware, but has recently blocked it off, so the path no longer covers the entire circumference of the pond.
Um, we, we kind of lost you at the end, I didn't know about that.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I actually saw it on Milton Neighbors, uh, no, it was on one of the, one of the websites, um, and then I did a little bit of research, I wasn't sure who, but now I know which house it is, it's, it's one of the, I think it's two or three down from the Ice House, going towards Canton Avenue, and they have closed it off, there's actually pictures, if you're, I can actually, I think I took a picture, I can circulate it, private property, do, do, do not cross, um.
I, I think the water line, that's illegal.
Yeah, that's on saltwater, though, I don't think it is on fresh.
It's not on, no, that's too bad, okay. Yeah, Richard, if you could send that to Mike Dennehy, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, so I, um, I do think, to Mike Zulus's point, I think, I want to get this addressed. That was one of the things I said to Mike Zulus, is I think we need to make sure we address this, whether it's, I don't know whether, you know, we get, and Michael talks about access to the point, and, I mean, the path and going around, you know, somehow. I think it's critical that we do it now, because this just happened, and I don't think we can let it just linger out there.
Right, so, um, so just, so just, I can clarify, um, Mike Zulus, uh, I know that we had talked about, um, access around the pond, but, um, I'm not sure that that happened, I mean, I, I, that it's in their plan or anything like that? In the planning board letter, uh, they, they noted that, that's still something to be added. Um, so, but you're saying you, you thought that they did?
Arthur has a point, but they were.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
Improvements to the path to the pond, but go ahead.
Okay, yeah, got it. Yes.
And, and that's, that's the point that I was going to make, Madam Chair, um, I too, I agree with Mike, I had noted in omission in this letter, but John Cannon has been in touch with, uh, Tim, I have seen communication from Tim to the ZBA, including access from the property to Pope's Pond. And that's, that was the issue, not around Pope's Pond, but to Pope's Pond. And ideally, it would be handicapped access where handicapped, um, provisions need to be taken place. But the, the key issue that we had raised, and Tim had incorporated in his communication to the ZBA, was access to the pond.
Right, but, uh, what I'm trying to find out is, uh, are you saying that that is in the application, because I didn't see it? Um, or that's something that we'd like to see?
That's definitely something we'd like to see, I can't state that it is in the application at this.
Right, okay, because that, that's, I'm sorry, I thought Mike Zulus was saying that it was in there, and I needed to move it from the second set of points up to the first, that's all, great, okay, I'll keep it there.
No, I, I don't know if it was in the application, I just, I thought that that's something they, they had agreed to.
Um, but, yeah, I thought that, I thought that they, they had, but it hasn't made it into the, the actual application. Um, okay, great, thank you.
Madam Chair, the only other comment other than those that I had was in the, in the third paragraph on your first page, it starts with in 2016, that last sentence, the paragraph is about the, the zoning that Tom Beating passed, the Parkway P U D.
Yes.
But at the end it says granting of this permit, I think it should just be the passage of Parkway P U D zoning, rather than a permit.
Right.
To refer to zoning, but other, those, that was the only other comment I had on it, substantively.
Okay, thank you, no, that's wrong.
If, if we want to entertain supporting it, and, um, I, I think we should, could we share a draft of the letter with Johanna and have her review it? Because my sense was from her that support was not the right word, so if she's, if you've had a subsequent conversation with her, Melinda, and, and, um, and that's changed, then, then I'm all for it.
No, let, let's send it to Johanna, I think that's a great idea, and, um, maybe we could say, uh, would, would we like to bring it to our next meeting? Or would we like to prove it subject to Johanna's review?
I, is there any downside to doing it the next meeting?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, good. Um, thank you, everybody, um, let's see, so I'll make those little changes and get them to her. And, pardon me, so, future meeting dates, so we have Sightwalk for, um, 6:52 on Friday. And, um, actually, the MMA conference is Thursday and Friday, as well, some of us are attending the Chappa Housing Conference, um, on Friday, no, Thursday, so there's, there are a lot of things like that. Um, our next regular meeting date is the 27th at seven. And, um. And then after that, it's the 10th and, um, the 24th. So. And hopefully, we won't, uh, we, I, I, I know it's been difficult, uh, we've been meeting a lot, so hopefully that will, you know, we can do something different and just meet twice in February. Um, are there any community happenings that? Nope, okay, um, and future agenda items, I think we've got all those, so, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll do, I'll move to adjourn.
Great, second.
Thank you, um, all those in favor, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Thank you for making such an effort to, to join us, I know you're, you're busy protecting people.
I wish you could see me today, all right, I'll see you, bye, thanks.
Um, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins, yes, and thank you, and thank you, Hillary, and thank you, uh, Mr. Dennehy, and everyone who attended today.